Good morning, good morning. Blessings to New Mount Alder's Baptist Church, to our friends, to our families, to all those that have tuned in. We greet you with Jesus' joy, because the joy of the Lord is our strength. We are so glad that you have joined us this morning for our morning Bible study. Today we are in Psalms 35, 36, and 37. We pray that you have read these scriptures, because we will not be reading them word for word, but we pray that you have read them and you will be able to follow us in our lesson today. Again, we are praying for those that are sick and shut in. Our list has not ceased for New Mount Alder's. We have persons that are continuously having surgery, persons that have been in the hospital and some will have surgery on tomorrow. So our prayers are for all of them. We are praying for Brother Chester Harris and the loss of his grandson Jeffrey. And so we are asking God's blessings upon each and every person. If I'm not mistaken, I believe that service will be Friday. Amen. We are still praying for our dearly beloved Sister Linda Jeremie Harrison and the loss of her wonderful uncle that was a matriarch to the family. So our prayers are with you in her loss. And I apologize, I wasn't feeling well Monday, so I could not join you at that service. But our heartfelt prayers go out to you and to your family, Sister Linda. All right, at this time, let us bow our heads and pray. Father, we thank you for another day, Lord, another day that you have blessed us, another day that you have kept us, another day, God, that you have shined your countenance upon us. We thank you for being our Lord, our Savior, and our God. We thank you, Lord, because when we can't call on anyone else, we know that we can call on you. You are our rock, you are our refuge, you are our very present help in the time of storm. So God bless our families, give, touch their hearts to heal some of their hurt. Then, God, touch those that are physically not well, those that have had surgeries on their back and surgeries on their knees and, Father God, those that are in the hospital still trying and will have surgery on their hearts. We ask, Father God, that you continue to prove yourself as their Lord, their Savior, and their God. Continue to allow them to trust in you, Lord, with all of their heart. Lean not on their own understanding, but in all their ways acknowledge you, and you will direct their path. Why? Because you said in your word, "The steps of a good man are ordered by the Lord." So, Lord, we pray for everyone all through our land. We pray for our administration in Washington DC. We pray for those that are in leadership roles. We pray for those that are subject to make change. And then, God, we pray for ourselves, because we who are able physically need to be able to go out and exercise our right to vote for whoever it is that we feel will make a difference in our world. So, God, thank you for the opportunity to vote, thank you for the right to vote, and thank you, Father, that we might exercise that gift. Lord, bless those that are homeless today. We pray that you are opening doors, God, and that we can always be a blessing to someone else that is in need. Lord, we thank you and we give you glory. It is in Jesus' name that we pray now with thanksgiving. And those who believed, joined me and said, "Amen." Amen. As we look this morning in Psalms 35, 36, and 37, we are going to find out that this Psalm 35, it is called an impregatory psalm. An impregatory psalm, I-M-P-R-E-C-A-T-O-R-Y, which means that the writer calls down divine vengeance on his enemies, that he's calling down for vengeance on his enemies. Now, these words are sometimes considered to be mean or they are expressed with a certain type of hatred. Now, we know and we thank God for Jesus coming on the scene, because Jesus teaches us, see, in the Old Testament, there was vengeance and there were other things that might have been cruel. But we are so glad that when Jesus comes on the scene, Jesus puts us in a different mindset and Jesus begins to let us know that vengeance is His. We don't have to worry about hating people. We don't have to worry about praying about people not doing well. We are to pray the goodness of God on everyone. Jesus gives us a different mindset, even to the point we were told that in the Old Testament, it taught us that if someone did something, that we had the right to do it back to them. But I'm so glad today Jesus comes on the scene and He says, "That was in the day of old, but this I say to you, that if someone slaps one cheek, it's our responsibility to turn and to the other." That means we just don't retaliate, we don't go back and try to have a vindictive spirit. That's not God's way. God wants us to love and God wants us to forgive. Amen? And so when we look at that scripture, Psalm 35, and especially in verse 19. 19 says, and we will read a few of the others, but 19 says, "Let not them that are my enemies wrongfully rejoice over me; neither let them wink with the eye that hates me without a cause." You see, when Jesus comes on the scene and He says in John 15, chapter 15, verses 24 and 25, "They hated me without a cause." They hated me without a cause. Beloveds, that really helps us to know that there will be some people on this earth that will not like you. I don't care what you do to them, I don't care what you do for them, I don't care what you do on their behalf to help them out. They are not going to like you. So the Lord says, "They hated Him without a cause." So if they hate our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, without a cause, what about you and what about me? So let us not get caught up in that, because some people will just choose darkness over light. Some people will just choose darkness over light. All right, let's look at a few verses this morning in Psalm 35. "Cleed my cause," verse 1, "O Lord, with them that strive with me; fight against them that fight against me. Take hold of shield and buckler and stand up for mine help. Draw out also the spear and stop the way against them that persecute me. Say unto my soul, 'I am thy salvation.' Let them be confounded and put to shame that seek after my soul; let them be burned or turned back and brought to confusion that divides my heart. Let them be as chat before the wind, and let the angel of the Lord chase them; let their way be dark and slippery, and let the angel of the Lord persecute them." They're saying things that are not profitable for a person. And if we love the Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, we have learned that some of our ways or some of the ways that we think, we have to change those ways into godly ways, into ways that the Lord Jesus would be pleased and the things that He taught while He was on earth. And it says in verse 8, "Let destruction come upon him at unaware, and let him met that he had hid catch himself into that very destruction, let him fall; and my soul shall be joyful in the Lord; it shall rejoice in his salvation." Then verse 10 says, "All my bones shall say, 'Lord, who is like unto thee which delivereth the poor from him that is too strong for him? Yea, the poor and the needy from him that spoileth him.'" So we're going on and we're learning here that it is no new thing for the most righteous men and the most righteous cause to meet with enemies. This is a fruit of the old enity in the seed of the serpent against the seed of the woman. Go back to the Garden of Eden. And then we learn that David in his affliction, Christ in his sufferings, the church under persecution, and the Christian in the hour of temptation, all beseech the Almighty to appear in their behalf and to vindicate their cause. We are asked to justify uneasiness at the injuries men do us by our never having given them cause to use us so ill. But by this, they should be made easy, for then we may expect that God will plead our cause, that God is going to plead our cause. This Psalm 35, if you want to jot down these three things. Psalm 35, verses 1 through 10. Psalm 35 teaches us in verses 1 through 10 that David is praying for safety. David is praying for safety, that the Lord will keep him. In verses 11 through 16, we are going to find that David is going to complain to his enemies. He's going to complain to his enemy. And in the last portion of this scripture, 17 through 28, we're going to find that David calls upon God to support him. David is going to call upon God to support him. And we're just going to do a few scriptures to show you the evidence of that. So he said, number one, David prays for safety. We read that to show you, he's asking God to let their way be dark and, you know, let them be chaffed and all of his bones say, "Lord, you know, who's going to deliver from the poor?" So now David in verses 11 through 16 is going to complain to his enemies. So let's listen to some of the complaints. Here it says, "False witnesses," verse 11, "did rise up that laid to my charge things that I knew not. They rewarded me evil for good to the spoiling of my soul." He's complaining. "But as for me, when they were sick, my clothing was sackcloth; I umbled my soul with fasting, and my prayer returned into my own bosom." So he's telling what he's done. He says in 14, "I behaved myself as though he had been my friend or brother; I bowed down heavily as one that mourned for his mother; but in my adversity, in his struggle, they rejoiced and gathered together themselves. Yea, the objects gathered themselves together against me, and I knew it not; they did tear me and cease now." And then he says here in verse 16, "With hypocritical mockers in feast they gnashed upon me and whipped their teeth." So David is complaining about his enemies. Now we go to verses 17 through 28, and we'll just read a few of those verses. It says, "And he calls upon God to support him." David is now calling upon God. And he starts with verse 17 by simply saying, "Lord, how long will thou look on? Rescue my soul from their destructions, my darling, from the lions; I will give thee thanks in the great congregation; I will praise thee among much people." Then he goes back, "Let not them that are my enemies wrongfully rejoice over me; neither let them wink with the eye that hates me without a cause." So he says, "For they speak not peace, but they devise deceitful matters against them that are quiet in the land. Yea, they opened their mouth wide against me and said, 'Uh-huh, uh-huh; our eyes have seen it.'" So he goes on and he's talking. Let's look at verse 24 now, where he says, "Judge me, O Lord, my God, according to thy righteousness, and let them not rejoice over me; let them not say in their hearts, 'Ah, so would we have it;' let them not say, 'We have swallowed him up.'" And so he goes on and on. And look at verse 27. It's a lot of let them, let them, let them. He's talking now and calling on God to, you know, to support him. You know, "I want them to change their ways, Lord, I want them to do this." So he says in verse 27, "Let them shout for joy and be glad that favor my righteous cause. Yea, let them say continually, 'Let the Lord be magnified, which hath pleasure in the prosperity of his servant; and my tongue shall speak of thy righteousness and of thy praise all the day long.'" David's had this conversation. Now, as we move now to Psalm 36, this psalm is referred to as a wisdom psalm. So if you want to jot down that this psalm is referred to as a wisdom psalm. Strong words that guide us on the right path. There are strong words that guide us on the right path. And in this particular verse, book of Psalms, verses 1 through 4, verses 1 through 4 is talking to us about the bad state of wickedness, the bad state. And we're going to cover this very quickly. It says, "The transgression of the wicked set within my heart that there is no fear of God before His eyes; for He flattered Himself in His own eyes until His iniquity be found to be hateful. The words of His mouth are iniquity and deceit; He has left off to be wise and to do good. He devised this mischief upon His bed; He set it Himself in a way that is not good; He abhorred not evil." So it's a bad state for the wicked. Now, we're going to learn that in verses 5 through 12, we're going to talk about now the goodness of God in verses 5 through 12. I'm just going to read a couple of these verses. We'll start with number 5. "Thy mercy, O Lord, is in the heavens, and thy faithfulness reaches into or unto the clouds. Thy righteousness is like the great mountains; thy judgments are a great deep, O Lord; thy preserveth man and beast." We're talking now about the goodness of God. Verse 7, "How excellent is thy loving kindness, O Lord! Therefore the children of men put their trust under the shadow of thy wings." And then we look at verse 10, when it says, "Oh, continue thy loving kindness unto them that know thee and thy righteousness to the upright in heart. Let not the foot of pride come against me, and let not the hand of the wicked remove me." Verse 12 says, "There are the workers of iniquity fallen; they are cast down and shall not be able to rise." So this 36 really talks again about verses 1 through 4, the bad state of the wicked, and verses 5 through 12, the goodness of God. I think you will agree today that God truly is good. Amen? And now let us look at Psalm 37. Psalm 37 is a very, very familiar psalm, and we hear it over and over and over again. We have heard it down through the years, and it starts out simply, "Fret not thyself because of evil-doers; neither be thy envious against the workers of iniquity; for they shall soon be cut down like the grass and wither as the green earth." It lets you know, don't concern yourself, because many times we look at these evil-doers in our world, we're looking at them and we think that they're flourishing. We think that they're doing well. But I need you, us, to understand, and sometimes we get tempted to do wrong because we say sometimes that those who are doing wicked are doing better than those that are blessed that are doing good or doing the will of God. But I need you to understand, that is not the case. Even though we might be tempted to fret, to think that the only happy people are those that are prone to doing these things that are wicked, but we need to look forward with an eye of faith. When we look forward with an eye of faith, we shall see no reason for the enemy to be envious or jealous of the wickedness of our enemies. Their weeping and their wailing will be everlasting. The life of religion is in believing and trusting in the God of our salvation. Because look at what it says in verse 3, "Trust in the Lord and do good." See, a lot of times while we're trusting, we're going to do some other things. God is saying that if you believe in me and you're trusting in me, you shouldn't be believing and trusting in the rabbit foot. You shouldn't be believing and trusting in roots. You shouldn't be believing and trusting in other gods. If you believe and trust in me, that should be enough in your faith to settle and for you to know that God will work it out. No, He does not always work it out the way we want Him to work it out, but He will work it out for our good. Romans 8:28 says, "And we know that all things work together for the good to them who love the Lord, who are the cause according to His purposes." So what tells us in verse 4, "Delight thyself also in the Lord; and he shall give thee the desires of thine heart." Hallelujah. Sometimes we are not in the will of God, but we are expecting God to meet our every need. This says delight ourselves. We've got to be in the Lord and Him in us. Amen? We've got to work on that relationship, work on that prayer line. Amen? Work on that study life. And if we're delighting ourselves, instead of spending a lot of time and listening to music that is not of God, let's turn our attentions to godly things and listen to music that will soothe the soul, music that promises hope. Read His word, so we'll know that God never fails. Study His word, not just read it, but take time to really study the word of God. We are delighting ourselves in the Lord, and He shall give us the desires of our heart. 5 says, "Commit thy way unto the Lord; trust also in Him, and he shall bring it to pass." The Lord's going to bring it to pass. Amen? How is it that we wake up when we're, that night we cried, we laid before the Lord, we've had a good cry, we prayed so hard that we fell asleep, just laying before the Lord, asking Him to help us out. We wake up the next morning, guess what? We're still here, the problem, it seems like God is dissolving or He's working out the problems. What we need to do is just give Him glory and honor, because if we commit our ways and trust Him, He shall bring it to pass. And verse 6 tells us, "And he shall bring forth thy righteousness as the light and thy judgment as the new day." But verse 7 is something that we need to do more of. It tells us to rest in the Lord. Amen? And wait patiently for Him. Many times, we don't want to wait on the Lord. We think that we are the Lord's helper, so we want to help the Lord do something. As Sarai decided when she heard that she was going to bear a child at this late age, she laughed because she knew that, to bear a child all these years. So she laughed and then she tried to give her servant Hagar to her husband, thinking she's helping God. But beloved, God does not need our help. He's God all by Himself. He can do anything but fail. So let us rest in the Lord and learn how to wait patiently for Him. "Fret not thyself because of him who prospereth in his way, because of the wicked man who bringeth wicked devices to pass." And this is a verse that I love. Cease from anger. Cease, of course, means to stop. Stop from anger. Some of us wake up angry, we go through the day angry, we go to bed angry, we talk to people angry, we go out, look in the public, looking angry. God says, "Cease from anger and forsake wrath." We have to make sure that if we are trusting God, if we are really trusting Him, then we don't have to be angry about anything. We can put a smile on our face, because we have the confidence and the blessed assurance of knowing that God is working it out. Now, I'd like for you to look at verse 11, if ever you doubted God. Verse 11 says, "But the meat shall inherit the earth and shall delight themselves in the abundance of peace." God will give us peace, which surpasses all understanding. I want you to look now with me at verse 17. "For the arms of the wicked shall be broken, but the Lord upholdeth the righteous; the Lord knoweth the days of the upright, and their inheritance shall be forever." I want us to be reminded today as we look at verses 23 and 24. Whatever's going on in your life, if you're trusting Him, you're fretting, you're not yourself because of evil-doers, I want you to know that the steps of a good man are ordered by the Lord, and he delighted in his way. I want you to know that if you're trusting God, God is going to lead and guide you in the path of righteousness. It says, "The steps of a good man are ordered by the Lord, and he delighted in his way." Though he falls, sometimes we might fall, "He shall not be utterly cast down; for the Lord upholdeth him in his hand." Beloved, I just had my 70th birthday, and to God be the glory. So I can say this with assurance. "I have been young, and now am old; yet have I not seen the righteous forsaken, nor his seed begging bread." Yet have I not seen the righteous forsaken, nor his seed begging bread. God will take care of you. You must know that and remember that. But there's some things we need to do. Verse twenty seven says, depart from evil and do good and dwell forevermore. Twenty nine says, the righteous shall inherit the land and dwell therein forever. I want you to know today that verse thirty three says, the Lord will not leave him in his hand, nor condemn him when he is judged. Thirty four reminds us to just wait on Him. Wait on the Lord and keep his way. And he shall exalt thee to inherit the land. God is promising us a land. Which the wicked are cut off, thou shalt see it. Hallelujah! I believe they're talking about heaven. And then it goes on to tell us in verses thirty seven to forty, mark the perfect man, and behold the upright; for the end of that man is peace. But the transgressors shall be destroyed together. The end of the wicked shall be cut off. But the salvation of the righteous is of the Lord. He is their strength in the time of trouble. And the Lord shall help them and deliver them. And he shall deliver them from the wicked and save them because they trust in the Lord. Beloveds today, keep trusting. I don't care what your circumstances are. I don't care how depressed you might have been. When you look at this scripture and you learn how to simply trust in the Lord, delight yourself, commit your ways, rest in the Lord, cease from anger. When you learn that the Lord is telling us these things and to depart from evil and do good, when we are learning that all we have to do is just wait on the Lord, hallelujah, then I'm telling you, he shall bring all of these things to pass. May God bless you. May his peace be upon you. This Sunday, we're going to start eleven AM. There's going to be special music. We want you to come and enjoy with us as we worship the Lord. The Word of God will come forth at eleven AM. We're looking forward to all of you being in our house. Amen? Facebook Live. Next week's lesson, we're looking at Psalms thirty eight, thirty nine, forty, and forty one. Next week. May God bless you. May his peace be upon you. Continue to lift each other in prayer. Because prayer changes people, and people can change things.